In this church. And so, I can see where I made a lot of tactical errors just by not being prayerful enough and like I said, being very honest. And could have kind of slowed down and kind of got quiet some more, got some more counsel because there's what? Safety in a multitude of counsel. And so, those are some of the corrective measures we're doing now. So, let me give you our vision because what's... Most of you may not know the like real vision. And it is to empower people to live healthy and whole in Christ as they impact the world. To empower people to live healthy and whole in Christ as they impact the world. Which says that our job, our assignment as a church is that we help people find their wholeness in Christ. Which means, most of the time, people are going to come to us wounded, broken, scarred, hurt. And we have to be able to keep the main thing, the main thing. Because if not, we'll start bickering and we'll start arguing and we'll start seeing their issues more than the God in them. Yeah, right. And I have been guilty. But God took me back to this, "Son, you empower people to live healthy and whole in Christ as they impact the world." So, I've been noticing that as a church culture, there were kind of some toxic behaviors or toxic culture that we had. I'm telling y'all, quietness is good for the soul. I'm telling you. I've been noticing, and I don't know if that's really healthy, Lord. Like, okay, we need to fix that. We need to change that. And so, that's kind of where this town hall meeting came from because our goal here is that we move forward as a healthy church. Say that. We move forward as a healthy church. One more time. We move forward as a healthy church. That is the goal. That's why, that's why we're here. I think we all can, can agree that we want to honor God. We want to grow in a God and we want to change lives for God. Can we all agree on that? Okay. And so, I'm going to give a couple of scriptures because we're primarily going to talk about moving forward as a healthy church. The Bible is very clear and it talks about the marks, marks of a healthy church. So, if you have your Bibles, go to Genesis 11 and 6 because the Bible places great emphasis on unity. So, one of the marks of a healthy church is unity. Look, he said, "The people are united and they all speak the same language." After this, look at this, "Nothing they set out to do will be impossible for them." Now, go to Psalms 133 and verse 1. I got a lot of scriptures. Got a lot of scriptures today. Psalms 133 and verse 1. "How good and pleasant it is when God's people live in unity." John 17 and verse number 21. John 17, verse number 21. Here it is. A Christ says, "That they may all be one as you, Father, are in me and I in you." Look at this. Jesus says that my prayer is that this people, that they become one. So, one of the marks of a very healthy church is unity. Which means, we're of one heart, one mind, one, one goal. But if that's the mark of a healthy church and Satan doesn't want you to be a very healthy church, what do you think he will do? Cause division, right? Amen? Okay, so, um, let's go to 1 Peter 5 and verse 8. It says, "You have to be alert and be, baby, sober-minded for your enemy prowls around..." Look at this, "like a roaring lion, looking for someone to devour." So, the enemy is always looking for holes. Looking for any way he can, you know, get in because at the end of the day, he knows that if I can get them separated, I can hinder what God wants them to do. And one of the age-old tools that Satan uses, ancient, this is something Paul talked about in Ephesians, in 1 Corinthians, Thessalonians, is that Paul talks about gossip will kill unity within a church. Okay, so, let me give you scriptures. Let's go to Proverbs 16 and verse number 28. So, our job is that we have to guard against gossip. Look at one person and say, "Guard against gossip." Now, you can call it what you want to. You can call it venting, whatever you want to call it. But the scripture is very clear. We have to guard against gossip. If it does not come for the edification or the building up... Hello? God calls it gossip. Okay, so, um, Proverbs 16 and verse 28. "A perverse person does what?" Stir up conflict. And a gossip separates close... Isn't that the word? That's the word. 1 Corinthians 1 and 10. Because you have to keep in mind that we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities and what? Powers, spiritual wickedness and high places. So, I'm curious. I'm, I'm just curious because we go expose the enemy today. If someone has called you on the phone, pulled you in a meeting, came to your house, and said anything negative about us or this church, raise your hand. You ain't got to be ashamed. You ain't got to be ashamed. What, what, what y'all scared for? I'm not going to ask you who. I'm, I'm, I just want you to see it. I want you to see it. See? See, see how the enemy works? And I know there's more in here, but you afraid to raise... You're afraid to raise your hand, right? What that means is that the enemy is very cunning. Which means, what he's trying to do is sow seeds of discord. Because what he wants to do is, because even the scripture says, "How can you say that you love God and you can't love or get along with the person that you see every, every day?" So, 1 Corinthians 1 and 10. "I appeal to you, brothers and sisters, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, that you all agree with one another in what, in everything that you say and that there be no divisions among you, but that ye be perfectly united in mind and thought." Isn't that good? Ephesians 4 and verse number 3. "Make every effort to keep the unity of the Spirit through the bond of peace." If the enemy wasn't going to attack your unity, why would you have to make every effort to keep it? We got to grow up church, come on. If the enemy wasn't going to attack that area, why would Paul say, "Make every effort to keep it"? Because he knows that that's going to be the door the enemy is going to try to use. Um, let's go to James 1 and verse 26. "If you claim to be religious but don't control your tongue, you are fooling yourself and your religion is worthless." Can we just read the Bible? That's the word. Come on, right? That is the word. Romans 16, verse number 17. "Now I urge you, brothers, to watch out for those who create divisions and obstacles that are contrary to the teaching you have learned. Turn away from them, for such people are not serving our Lord Christ, but their own appetites. By smooth talk and flattery, they deceive the hearts of the naive." Are we in the Bible? One more. Titus 3 and 10. "If people are causing divisions among you, give a first and a second warning. After that, have nothing more to do..." Let me read that one again. "If people are causing divisions among you, give a first and a second warning." Remember, what? We got to protect the house. Protect our unity, right? "Give a first and a second warning. After that, you have nothing more to do with them." So, when a person brings you anything, the first thing you say, "Let's go to the person you're talking about." Okay? Let's go to the person, let's go to the elders of the church and let's go do that. Okay? Now, you tell them what you just told me. So, we all can be in the same room too, right? Then, if it continues, you give them a second one. Even Paul talks about, in some cases, if they will not repent, you bring them before the church. Am I in the... You bring them before the church. Because he says, "At all costs, you got to protect your unity." And gossip can be like a cancer. It will spread from one person to the next. It'd be a dis-ease and you're wondering, "How come I don't see that person no more? Because they done heard something." And what we have to keep in mind, this is the sad part, y'all. This is the sad part, is that souls are on the line. You don't know how many people have come to me and said, "Pastor, Purpose Church is the last church I'm gonna try." Because I've been to so many churches and it went left and so much has happened. I'm gonna give this one more try. So, how sad is it that then gossip starts to spread and that person ends up leaving? This is why the Bible says, "We should have to give account for every idle word." So, when we stand before God one day, and we all will, God's going to say, "What about this date? You said this and that person fell away from the Lord because of what you said." Even if you don't know everything, sometimes it's best just to be quiet. If you don't know everything that's going on, just be quiet. Or go ask questions. Don't go spreading information that you got a piece, but you don't have the whole complete pie though. So, I just wanted to kind of emphasize this because God is ready to do some amazing things in his house. But more means more. Wherever much is given... Y'all preach! Preach! Y'all, in the Bible, I love it. Where much is given, much is required. So, as God adds more to this house and more people come into this house, I'm charging you that you protect the unity... No, thank you, Holy Spirit. God is charging you to protect the unity in this house. It should be, no enemy should be able to creep in on your watch. Hello? No enemy should be able to creep in on your watch. Because there's something bigger on the line. And so, this is not about he said and she said and all that. It, this is about us going higher. When the enemy hits, we go, we go higher, right? We know how to pray and those are the things we do. So, that's kind of the first kind of charge, is that make sure we protect the unity in this house. Because God is not the author of confusion. God is everything decently and in order. So, we're going to have, we're going to be very anal about addressing gossip going forward because I've given you scripture. So, so you know it's not a feeling, it's not what I think because I believe in doing Bible. Okay? So, the other mark of a healthy church is church vision. Okay? Church vision. And I apologize for not leaning more into vision. That is my fault. Would never let that happen again. Never let that happen again. Because the reason God called you here is for the vision of this house. This is more than, "Let's just come to church and let's just have a good time." No, that, God called you here because there's a certain part that you play in the vision of this house. And so, um, what I want to do is the next four months, we're going to call this the Focused Four Months. Say that. Focused Four Months. Okay? Say that one more time. The Focused Four Months. All right. Four months. All right? And so, there's a couple of areas that we're going to really focus on over the next four months. The first one is going to be fasting. Yes! There's a reason I've been doing what I've been doing, y'all. I've been having this fast two days here, three days here. Probably get rid of calling another one. I'm feeling early Decemberish. Because it's really time for us, the growing God. And I believe fasting is a lost art. And one of the signs of a church that flows in miracles is they live a fasted life. And so, this is really time for us to lean more into God and get in our Word and learn more and pray more. And so, we'll be having our corporate fast. I'm gonna go ahead and give you these, these dates. Uh, January the 2nd to the 22nd. That's, that's going to be our 21-day fast. So, I give you plenty of time. But from here on out, we'll be doing more shorter fast. You know, two days here, three days here, five, five days here because I'm trying to get us ready. Is there anybody here that really want to know God in a deeper way? Let me just... Okay, all right. Because I, I really believe that there is a people that want to know God intimately. That, you know, they're kind of tired of the like surface stuff with church. And so, they're like, "Teach me the Bible, pastor." Like, "Teach me how to grow in God." Like, "Nah, I'm not worried about foolishness and all the other stuff. I want truth." "Well, you should know the truth and the truth shall set you free." And so, um, let's look at Isaiah, Isaiah 58. Isaiah 58 and verse 6. "Is this not the fast I have chosen? To loose the bonds of wickedness, to undo the heavy burdens, to let the oppressed go free and that you break every yoke." That's the power of fasting. And there is some wickedness that we need to break. There is some yolks we need to tear down and that only comes through fasting. So, go ahead and prepare yourself, January 2nd through the 22nd. We'll be on a 21-day fast and I cannot wait. I cannot wait. It's going to be a powerful time. But the second thing pertaining to the Focused Four Months, okay? Is faithfulness. Say that with me. Faithfulness. Faithfulness. Important. Important. Because if this is the place God has called you to, then get planted. If this is the place God has called you to, get planted. No more in and out. Need people who are all in. I get it now. This church is not for everybody, but it is for somebody. Okay? So, I, I get it. If we're not your flow, if we're not your fit, I get it. If you are used to a traditional first lady, this is probably not going to work for you. I mean, hey. I, I, I'm just... Okay, let me, let me, let me go and kill this right, right now. It's me and her all day long. Okay? It's me and her all day long. All right? So, there's no way you can like me and not like her. Because we won. Where you do that at? That's the Bible, right? How you gonna like me and not like her? Or how you gonna like her and not like me? We are a package deal. If you get one, you get the other. It, it just is what it is. So, if you looking for a traditional first lady, then this is just not the church for you. Because she is co-pastor. She, you know, leaves here. She hear from God. Y'all don't know how many things she was praying and so she was like, "Honey, have you thought about this?" And I'm like, "No, girl, that is good. All right, yes, let's go do that." Because there are other women here who need to see women lead. Some of you with your spouses, you are leading ladies. So, you're not the one that's... And, and there's nothing wrong. There, there's nothing wrong if you're, you know, you're the one that wants to take a backseat and just take care of the home and all that. There's nothing wrong with that. But that's not everybody. Okay? It's not everybody. So, I want ladies here to, to feel comfortable being called into ministry and feel comfortable doing what God has called you to do. I want you to feel comfortable preaching the paint off the walls and prophesy. I want you to feel comfortable running that million-dollar business God has called you to have. So, um, it's important that it's faithfulness. Okay? The scripture says in Ephesians 4 and verse number 6. "He makes the whole body fit together perfectly as each part does its own special work. It helps the other parts grow so that the whole body..." Look at this. "So that the whole body is healthy and growing and full of love." It says that if God has called you to a certain place, that if you are part of the fit and you don't do your part, you are keeping the body from being healthy. Woo! Which means, there's a part that you play that I cannot play. There's a part that you play that your neighbor cannot play. That's how important you are. This is why Paul says, "Don't let the hand think it's more important than the foot." Don't, don't think the person with the mic is more important than the person ushering. Okay, see, y'all, y'all don't want to have a church that... Because we're all equally important. Do you know if they cut off your big toe, it throws your balance off? Everything else, you can have every other part of your body, but if they cut off your big toe, it throws off your equilibrium. So, let every part of the body know that they are equally important. So, faithfulness. I know there are some of you that's kind of being like in and out for a little bit. You know, how you been dating a little bit, just been bouncing around a little bit? It's time, let's get faithful. Look at somebody and say, "Faithfulness." Tell them, "God needs you." There's a gift that God has and quit making excuses. Quit making... We, we got the most excuses when it come to church I've ever seen in my life. When the truth of matter is, you know that you know. You, you know... You're okay, you're okay. You, 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 you know that thing in your gut that's like, "That, that's my, I'm supposed to be a part of that vision." That vision. So, let's get faithful. Okay? The third thing when it comes to the Focused Four Months, remember fasting? Faithfulness? Oh, oh, let me go back. Some of the areas of need. We need people worship team, youth and team, love team, ushers, greeters, car parkers, prayer ministry, security team, media team. Those are some of the key areas we need. All that is sitting in this house. Or you know somebody who's a part of this church who, who isn't here right now? You know they fit some of that. This house would have everything that it needs if everybody rose in their faithfulness. Amen? So, I'm expecting by the end of this year, every need is filled. It's in the house now, I know it. I pray. I know it's here. And I know God is tugging, it's just, will you answer the call? Amen? Okay. So, um, so the next area that we deal with in the Focused Four Months is fellowship. Okay? Fellowship. We need to build more time connecting as a church. That's something we have not done well. I understand we're all busy, but the Bible says, "Know those that labor among you." Even the scripture talks about in the book of Acts. It says that, "They continued and they broke bread in their homes and they ate together with gladness." Which means, there was a time that they had fellowship together. That it wasn't, "We just coming here on a Sunday morning and we really don't talk anymore or see each other anymore." So, we're going to do a better job about fellowship. So, the first opportunity you have, I'm glad you asked, is Wednesday, November the 20th. We're doing a Purpose Friendsgiving. Here at the church. That's a Wednesday night from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. A potluck. If you cannot cook, please go buy something. Just please go buy something. What y'all laughing for? I'm serious. If you cannot cook, just please go buy something. I would not judge you. I promise. You would not be judged. You know, put it in like one of them dishes from, from your home and just be like, "Look! Look what I'm bringing to the potluck." We would not judge you. Okay? Just go buy it. Just go... So, we'll do a Google form or something. So, we'll see who's bringing meats, who's bringing plates, who's bringing sides, who's bringing drinks. We'll do, we'll do one of those. So, please go sign up for that. But this is, this is not going to be church. This is going to be fellowship, okay? And so, we're just going to have maybe some Christmas music playing or something like that. And we're just going to have a good time and get to know each other and just laugh. Because I want to, I want to learn more about you. Is that okay? I mean, I would love to learn more about you. Like, you know, where were you born and stuff like that? I mean, do you have any brothers, any sisters? There's a lot of stuff I don't know. Because what I've learned, this is a thing I've learned. Sometimes gossip takes root because we don't know each other. Come on, come on. That if we knew each other, we could then say, "Nah, that, that don't sound like the person I know." No, uh-uh. And so, sometimes because we don't know each other, we let things linger. But we're going to kill that now. So, I want to see everybody who can, let's be at Purpose Friendsgiving. It's just going to be so much fun. We're going to have some games, Connect Four and Uno. Uno, I don't know if y'all want me on that Uno table. Y'all don't want none. I don't know if y'all, y'all want one of the Uno sets because I'm a woo! And Connect Four, oh, I'm good about... Except for Nadia. Nadia beat me at a Connect Four one time and I was a mad somebody, y'all. I was praying. How she beat me in Connect Four? We're just going to have fun. So, any, any questions on fellowship? Because I believe that if you're part of a church, you should want to get to know the people in your church. Right? Because we're doing, we're doing vision, right? "The faces may change, but the vision remains the same." Hear that. "The faces may change, but the vision remains the same." I know some of you are here for now, some of you... Yes, ma'am? If you got animals, don't let them be in, in the kitchen. Okay, y'all... 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 Y'all something. Y'all something, y'all... If you... No, I've seen some animals in the kitchen, but that's another... Yeah, just please... Lost my train of thought now. I was thinking... Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Faces may change, vision remains the same. Some of you I know are only here for a season. That you're here to get trained, you're here to get healed, then God's going to call you somewhere else. I know that. I'm fine with that. I know some of you, you're going to be here for a long time because you're almost like a pillar. And so, God has called you here through all different seasons, all the ups and downs, the ins and outs. You are here. But then there are some of you, God has called you to do your own work. There are pastors sitting in this room right now. Evangelists in this room, apostles, prophets sitting in this room right now. And you're just here for a season to be trained. And anybody that knows me knows that I love to push you. I love to train, equipped and build. Some, sometimes you may hear this thing where people say, "They don't respect my gift." That, that's, that's not us. But the apostle in, in us says, "You have a gift but no character." So, you got to sit down. So, it has nothing to do with your anointing per se. It has to do with your character. Because your gift will get you in rooms that your character will not... Cause your gift will get you in rooms that your character will not keep you in. So they don't respect my gift, they don't see my gift. No, you're just wild and you're not trained. Has nothing to do with your gifting, eh, eh, nothing. This is, this is why Paul says, let us walk worthy of the vocation wherewith we have been called. Or they are what? Appointed under the governance of tutors until the time appointed of the Father. And if you look in the context, it's a small F. Not a capital F. Capital F means God, small F meaning the fathers of the faith. So yes, you're anointed and you're gifted and you're called, but training is required. This, come on, come on, come on. This is why David had to go sit under Saul. This is even why Paul had to go sit and be trained, even though God called them. They still had to go sit and be trained. And the scripture even talks about, from the time David was first anointed with the horn of oil, it was seventeen years before he ever walked into the forens of what God called him. Not saying it's gonna take you that long, but what I'm saying, it's a principle that we see in the text. That, that's one of the issues we, Lord, I'm, okay, let me go back. I'm going somewhere else. That's one of the issues we have, is you get a call and you wanna go grab the mic. But you really need to go grab prayer. And character building. And you need to go grab a broom and a mop versus a mic. That's where the real characters develop. Yeah, I served my pastor, woo, for years. Cut his grass. Take his, whatever he needed, I, I would do it. And didn't charge him a dime. Whenever he was going anywhere, I'd take your pastor. I was fif- uh, sixteen, seventeen. Would drive him around, I would get home at twelve AM, one AM, and then go to school in the morning. If my pastor had to like move, pastor, I'm coming. Did it for years. Didn't charge him a dime. And it, it was an honor. Was an honor to serve because I was doing it as unto the Lord. That's what I'm saying, okay? Um. Fellowship. Uh, the next one. Two more and then, and then we're done. Finance. So over the next four months, um, we really wanna skinny up our budget. Um, any kinda areas we think that we're kinda over in, we wanna tighten that up. Because I truly believe you do the practical and God would do the supernatural. Okay? And so um, I've noticed looking at, at reports, um, probably the last three or four months, giving's been down about thirty percent. So whenever your budget changes, guess what? Your expenses must change. I mean, y'all do live by a budget. Okay? Um, and so, um, when you read Romans thirteen and verse eight, it says, oh, no man anything. Except to love each other. So it is important that over the next four months, we start to pay down debt. It's important that we increase our giving. It is important that we um, rebuild our cash reserves. Those is, that is the focus over the next four months. So if there's anything you see laying in this church that we don't necessarily need, we will sell it in a heartbeat. Cause why, why just have money just sitting around? Are y'all here? Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, it's, so if there's anything you see, believe me, I've been walking around this church, asking like, do we really need that? If we, if we don't need that, we'll sell it in a minute. Um, because I truly believe that um, churches need income to do real ministry. And so what we're gonna do over the next four months is those four areas. Um, this is so important to me that Pastor L and I, for the last three months, have not gotten paid a dime from this church. We said we would not take a salary. Um, am I right, LaShica? Yeah, we said we would not take any salary from this church. Cause this is important to me. I believe that a, that a good name is better than rubies and gold. I believe you should owe no man anything but to love. And so that's um, so yeah, so as you begin to see us make changes, this is why. And um, after this four, four months is up, we'll see where we are, and then we'll shift into plan, plan B. Okay? And the last one, I got I got fifteen minutes, cause I wanna spend some time on this last one. Um, let me give you a little context here. Um, the last one is facility, okay? Um, when we, I first saw this building in twenty twenty-two? Twenty twenty-two, cause we closed on it in twenty twenty-three. And um, this building was built in like the nineteen forties. Um, so any of you know that with old buildings, there's a lot of repair work that needs to be done, anything that's built in the nineteen forties requires a lot of work. But when I came in here, um, I don't, I, I felt that this could be a tremendous blessing to this area. That it, it was about church, but it was more than just church. What many of you may not know is that this building was um, it was a school. And that this was the only school blacks could come to before segregation ended. So there's so much history in this building. And so when I came here, I was thinking, you know what? This could really be a community asset. That's the term I kept hearing, community asset. Um, so for me, the vision for this building was that it would be the Wilmington Purpose Center. It's the home of Purpose Church. But we would brand it as the Wilmington Purpose Center. So yes, Purpose Church owns it. And yes, we have service here on Sundays and Wednesdays, and you know, events. But it, it was more about community for me. Because this area, this north side area has been underserved for such a long time. And so I felt that wouldn't this, wouldn't this be an amazing place, that this place is humming all week long? Um, and so if you go to the next slide, I think it's on the next slide. Um, yes, there it is right there. Don't have time to go through all of these, but this is the vision. This is what I saw whenever we closed on this. That this would be the Wilmington Purpose Center and we would have programs running all throughout this place. Mental health programs, programs for teens, programs for seniors. Um, programs for like job preparation, programs for men, I mean, programs for singles, programs for married couples, just programmatic center. That's what this, this place would be. Now you can see why I said I apologize for not focusing on the vision. We've been so buried in stuff that really don't matter when God is saying your city needs your programs. Every time I read and I hear somebody else got shot or somebody got killed, I'm like, God, help us to be a programmatic center. Or you read about a mother who can't afford childcare, so she has to leave her kids at home. What if we had discounted childcare, affordable childcare here? A programmatic center. So it would be the Wilmington Purpose Center. It is the place of impact. Purpose Church owns it. And we have church here. But Monday through Saturday. This place is humming. Can you see the need? I know some of you looking, I mean, can you see the need? Th- this is why we do this. Because there are some people that will never come to your church, but they'll come for a program. And do we see ministry only in the confines of a Sunday morning? Or have you expanded your lens when it comes to how ministry is conducted? Wouldn't it be awesome to have um, to have a place where you can get a free oil change? That we have licensed mechanics here, equipment and a shop in the back that people can come and get a free oil change? A programmatic center. A prayer center. Where people know I can call this number twenty-four hours a day and somebody will pick up the phone and pray for me. Oh, y'all quiet, y'all quiet, y'all quiet. How ministry is conducted has changed. So because we want this to be a programmatic center, so make sure you get a picture of, of that. Cause that's, that's important. Because I want you to see yourself in the vision. This is why God has called some of you here, because it's a programmatic center. I even want a um, I would even love to have a school here. With a principal and a dean and a vice principal and all that stuff, so kids can come here and get their education from a licensed, licensed school. So some of you that have your masters and stuff, th- this is, this is why you're here. We can't do all this. Cause whether you know it or not, God is calling us to also plant other churches. I hope you know this is not the only church we see here in Wilmington, North Carolina. We've always had a vision, we would plant other churches. That's why some of you are pastors of those other churches. That we'll plant the church, train you, and then we'll put you there as the senior pastor. Come on, come on church, broaden your mind, broaden your mind, broaden your mind. There may come a day that I'm preaching here and she's preaching at this other site, and Pastor Aisha preaching at another s- site, and somebody else preaching at another site, until we find the right pastor that fits there. And Pastor, and the, you know, Carl was preaching at another site, until we find the right. The, the faces may change. But the vision remains the same. Amen, that's right baby, amen. Amen. So that's why we do this. So with that being said, I think this is my last slide, go to the next one. Um, this is why the last couple of months, I have been working on partnerships. Some of these we can birth ourselves, then others, um, we can do by partnerships. So these are just some of the partnerships that I've been reaching out to, meeting with, calling to some of them, they've kinda been here, they've walked through. Because thi- this is an amazing facility. Um, we gotta do some more work in here for sure. I mean, you know, we gotta redo our carpet. We got some roofing stuff we need to do, we got some choreo stuff we need to build out, some painting stuff, so I mean, we got some maintenance work we gotta do. But this is why we need all hands on, on deck. But these are some of the partners that I've reached out to. Uh, there's a film company that came in here and said, woo, we could shoot a couple of commercials here. That I like this kinda blank room you can have, you can move these chairs or grab one of them rooms in the back, and we can do a commercials. Then I had a film company come in and say, huh, maybe there's some movies we can do here, this would be a great location. Partnerships. I mean, come on church, we're here on Sundays and maybe Wednesdays. Okay, see y'all, y'all don't. Enterprising, churches have to be enterprising. You have this great asset that just sits most of the time. So partnerships, um. Northside Food, a co-op. They're building a grocery store about two blocks around the corner. I've been, you know, meeting with them to see, is there any synergy we can have? Is there some programs, some meeting spaces that you need while you're building your grocery store? Um, I think you know that the Y has a summer camp here. Um, for the past two years, there've been some talks and maybe doing after school and some other things. These are some of the partnerships, um. I walked in one day and it's about a twelve minute walk to Live Oak Pavilion. So this could be a parking site for concerts and events. We have an acre and a half that's empty most of the time during the week. So when there's a concert, why not park here, you try the small fee, and then walk to the concert? Are you with me? Yes, good, 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 okay. So partnerships, event space. Weddings. Um, family reunions, graduation parties, et cetera, et cetera. This would be amazing event space. Um, I think you see something about housing for the unsheltered. Um, I actually found a company in Charlotte, um, that they go around the country and they help churches reimagine their sanctuaries. Meaning that we can keep this, this part, but is there any potential to build out in the back? So now you have room for the, for those who are, who are homeless. And they have a separate entrance and separate bathrooms and separate. Yeah, um, I was talking to the guy and he says that so far they've done about thirty million dollars in projects across the country. And they're looking for more partners. And the city has a great need for more shelters. Aisha, am I right? Have a great need for more shelters. Reimagine. Reimagine, how can this be? Because I'm trying to get your mind off of just inside these four walls. Get your mind outside of these four walls. We have people we need to serve for the glory of God. We have lives we need to change for the glory of God. And even the scripture says that faith without works is dead being alone. That if I'm hungry, maybe you should give me food before you give me a scripture. If I'm cold, maybe you should give me a coat before you give me a script. You see the vision, thank you. Come on right here, thank you. You see the vision, thank you. Somebody got it. Somebody got it. That's it. So these are the partners. So if you, so I'm actively advertising, promoting, um, every way we can. Cause we're looking for the right partners. Now I know all these will not, you know, work. But God has the right partner for us. Or the right part, partners, I should say. I did it. Any quick questions or, or comments? And then like, yes ma'am?
So for most of this, are, is it strictly just us looking to utilize this space? Or other spaces that we are aware of that could be used?
Both. Yeah, you know something else you think we could be a great partner with? Let's, let's do it.
Like about the shelters, so that's something that, you know, we in Lord's years have been involved since twenty.
That's right.
And it's not that we have a lack of shelters, it's that majority of them were shut down by the state during COVID.
Wow.
And then the licensure was taken and they were never allowed to reopen.
Wow.
So those buildings are sitting there that people are trying to get rid of.
Come on.
But the people, the former owners, like they don't have to make the money to keep it up.
That's good. Thank you. Good information. Um. Yeah, thank you, thank you for that. Any other quick questions or comments? I just wanted to kinda, like I said, settle the house. Settle the house, so that you can see where we're going. Why, why we make certain moves and why we do what we do. Why, why we make certain moves and why we do what we do. Yes, we're, you know, growing in God, loving God. But we empower people to live healthy and whole in Christ as they impact the world. So I wanna see lives changed for the glory of God. I wanna see our city changed for the glory of God. You can rise to your feet. No more questions, no more comments? If not, we, we good, we go. And thank y'all so much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. So spread the word. Um, we had some issues with our live, so I don't know if we went live or not. But they, they recorded it, hopefully. Um, so if they did record it, we'll post this later, so we can kinda share it. But if not, please share this information. Share this information so that everybody will know, um, we go high, y'all. We, we, we don't get bogged down, and we will not let the enemy win in this, in this place. Amen. All these intercessors and prayer words in here, we will not let the enemy win. Can you look at somebody and say, "We have too much work to do"?
We have too much work to do.
Too much work to do, y'all. You see it, too much work to do. Um, Tasha, can you go back to that programs real quick? I want you to see it again. We have too, look at that. We have too much work to do. Too much work to do. We gotta teach people how to buy homes. Some of you in, in here, um, you are the first person to own a home in your family. Because of what you learned and because of what you saw God do in this place. Too much work to do. So I'm asking you to promise me that, Pastor, we will protect the vision of this house. Can you raise your hand and say, "Pastor, I will protect the vision of this house"? Thank you. Father, we give you glory and honor for this day. I thank you, woo, for the wind of change. Woo, I sense blowing in this house. Even as you told us weeks ago, God, that the ground was turning over. God, you have allowed your word to show forth in splendor and in power. So God, I declare that there is nothing broken, nothing missing in this house. That we are of one heart and of one mind. Every God divisive tactic of the enemy, we render it null and void now. God, we come as one heart of one mind and one focus, that we will see the vision and the promise of God come to pass in this region. God, I thank you for this wonderful group of people. Thank you for their giftings. Thank you for their skill. Thank you for their heart to, Lord, serve you. So Father, as we leave this place, but never your presence, I thank you that the angels of God are encamped around about every soul. Can you hug somebody as you leave?